Okay, Mayor, I have it at 7:02 and the stream is live.
Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Trustees for the Village of Woodridge on this Thursday, November 19th, 2020. We call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM and ask our Deputy Clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Hendricks.
Present.
Trustee Blair.
Present.
Trustee Martinez.
Present.
Trustee Abbott.
Present.
Trustee Krusek.
Present.
Trustee Page.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present.
Quorum is established.
Thank you very much. Please join us in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance being led by the Village Board this evening. I pledge allegiance.
allegiance.
To the flag. To the flag.
Of the United States.
Of America.
And to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Under special awards and presentation, we do have two proclamations. One is the 2020 Complete Count Committee Recognition, and also proclamation for Small Business Saturday, which is Saturday, November 28th, 2020. Both are in our village records. This evening, we do have the need for a public hearing, which is being convened by the Mayor and the Village Board of Trustees for the purpose of announcing the proposed fiscal year 2021 village budget. Going to ask, please, if our staff is ready to present. Hello, Mayor. I believe Tracy's presenting tonight, so I'm looking for her here. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I could, just to make sure before we get going, are you declaring the public hearing open?
Yes, I am.
All right, and then Tracy is going to be the Speaker. Nadine, is that what you said?
That is correct.
All right, Tracy, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay.
Here we go. Thank you.
Can you, we'll trust you when you, that you're raising your right hand. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please state your name for the record.
Tracy Morocco.
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you, Phil. So tonight is the hearing on the 2021 budget. We'll provide a high-level overview of the village's revenues and expenses for the upcoming year, and we'll also provide a brief summary of the library's 2021 budget. But before we get into 2021, we wanted to take a quick look at where we expect to end 2020. I'm sorry, Phil. Next two slides, I think, year-end outlook, general fund. Okay, so focusing on the general fund, it's looking a little bit rosier since the last time we met at the Budget Workshop. Revenues are expected to end the year $200,000 higher than budget, and expenditures are projected to be $1.3 million less than budget. And those variances are due to, on the revenue side, due to the receipt of the $1.7 million in CARES Act funding from DuPage County. And on the revenue side, I'm sorry, on the expense side, those variances are due to the cost-saving measures that we implemented in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Those measures were the hiring freeze, we ceased all discretionary spending, we eliminated the vehicle and equipment replacement transfers, and all of those helped to lessen the impact of COVID-19. Next slide, Phil. So the impact of this and the general fund, fund balance, so in the 2020 budget, we were expecting to end the year with a deficit of $1.8 million. And when we met at the Budget Workshop, that deficit had increased to $2 million. However, with the receipt of the CARES Act funding and our cost-saving measures, that deficit has been reduced to $260,000, which is a $1.5 million decrease compared to budget. And that leaves us with an ending fund balance in the general fund of $73.4 million in the general fund. Any questions on 2020 before we go into 2021? Okay, Phil, next slide. Next slide, thank you. So across all funds for 2021, we're projecting the beginning fund balance to be $92.3 million. Revenues are projected to be $46.5 million, expenditure $61.4 million, which leaves us with an ending fund balance of $77.3 million in 2021 across all funds. So tonight, the board is considering a budget that achieves the following objectives. It's balanced using a planned spend down in reserves. 2021 marks the first time in recent years that capital projects are the largest village expense, usually its personnel. And that's due to the fact that we have $20 million budgeted for capital improvements this year. $5 million of that is for Phase 1 of the Police and Public Works Facility Project, which will include design and construction engineering in 2021. The 2021 budget also focuses on maintaining core services amidst the COVID-19 pandemic, and this is reflected in some COVID modifications that we have budgeted, which include the UV disinfection system, adding Zoom room or Zoom capabilities in our meeting rooms and boardroom. And we're also budgeting for an employee, additional employee exit to be added at the Public Works Building to allow for better social distancing. Next slide, Phil. So revenues here are for all funds. Total revenues are about 1% less than 2020 revenues, and that's in spite of a 12, what we're projecting to be a 12% decline in sales tax revenues in 2021 due to the ongoing economic downturn. This decline was offset by other, by increases in other revenue sources, including use tax. We also have an increase in state grants in the MFT Fund and an increase in inter-fund transfers, primarily in the DEA Fund. We're budgeting for a transfer from the DEA Fund to the Capital Projects Fund for the Police and Public Works Facility Project. Next slide, though. All right, 2021 expenditures are 15% higher than the 2020 budget, and that's driven by the capital projects that I've mentioned. There are $20 million this year, which is a 60% increase or $8 million increase over the 2020 budget. Police pension contribution also increased 15% compared to 2020. Next slide, Phil. So this includes a high-level summary of some of our capital projects in 2021. This is just in the Capital Projects Fund and the general fund. As I mentioned, Phase 1 of the Police and Public Works Facility at $5.5 million. We also have $1.1 million budgeted for Plaza 1 capital maintenance. That includes a new roof, HVAC system, and a new generator. We also have storm sewer improvements at about $700,000, two new traffic signal replacements at $700,000, 75th Street Frontage Road resurfacing at $600,000. And for that, we are expecting to be reimbursed partially by DuPage County. We also have the COVID modifications that I went through earlier. Next slide, Phil. Now, looking at the general fund, for 2021, we are estimating to begin the year with a fund balance of $20.7 million. Revenues are budgeted at $19.8 million. Expenditures are budgeted at $23.6 million, leaving us with an ending fund balance of $16.9 million. So our revenues are, like I said, $19.8 million, which is about $1.2 million less than the 2020 budget. And we'll walk through some of those variances on the next slide. Expenditures are $23.6 million, which is a 4% increase over the 2020 budget. If we exclude the police pension contribution from this, the increase is less than 1/10th of a percent. The general fund budget is balanced through the use of reserves, which leaves us with an ending but fund balance, as I mentioned, of $16.9 million, which is a 57% fund balance. This is above our 25% fund balance policy. However, our reserves are slowly depleting. Back in 2017, our fund balance was at 94% in the general fund. Next slide, Phil. So our revenues in the general fund, as I mentioned, are about $1 million less than 20, the 2020 budget. This is due to, we're projecting a $700,000 decline in sales tax due to the recession. Also, our utility tax, particularly telecom utility tax, continues to decline 7% or 8% each year, and we're also projecting interest income to be lower than 2020. Next slide, Phil. Expenditures in the general fund increased $900,000 compared to the 2020 budget. As I mentioned, that's due to, primarily due to the police pension contribution. Capital expenses in this fund also had the second-largest increase. They increased $275,000 over the 2020 budget, and that's due to those COVID modifications that we just discussed. Next slide, Phil. So this year has been an unprecedented year, as, as we can all experience. The COVID-19 pandemic has brought us extraordinary challenges and some unique opportunities. We, the village needed to move very quickly from an onsite, service-based organization to a remote working environment, and then back again two to three months later. COVID has also significantly impacted our business community, which has resulted in reductions to our sales tax revenue. On top of that, our revenue growth already was pretty minimal over the past few years, and COVID-19 has compounded that situation. And as we know, our village is over 60 years old, and our infrastructure needs are increasing, and our, and funding for those projects will need to be available in the next years in order to adequately maintain our systems. Next slide, Phil. Looking at the Water and Sewer Fund. Next slide, Phil. For 2021, the beginning fund balance is projected to be $7.8 million. Revenues are estimated at $10.2 million. Budgeted expenditures are at $13.3 million, leaving us with an ending fund balance of $4.6 million. Revenues at $10.2 million are less than, it represents less than a 1% decline, and that's due to our water consumption every year continues to decline about 2% each year. This decline was partially offset by the proposed 30-cent increase to the capital improvement fee that the board will be voting on tonight. Expenditures are at $13.3 million, which is 10% increase, or $1.2 million more than the 2020 budget, and that's due to the capital projects that are scheduled for this year. Next slide, Phil. Okay, so our revenues in the Water and Sewer Fund, primarily over half comes from water sales at 66% or $6.7 million, followed by the fixed water maintenance fee at $1.9 million. And last, and thirdly, the miscellaneous revenues, which includes the capital improvement fee, connection fees, and meter sales at 8%. Next slide, though. Water and Sewer Fund expenditures, the largest cost center in this fund is water operations at $9.4 million budgeted for 2021. $4.5 million of this is for the purchase of water from the DuPage Water Commission. Sanitary Services is the second-largest cost center. Their budget for 2021 is $2.5 million, $2 million of which is budgeted for capital projects. Next slide, Phil. All right, capital projects budgeted for the Water and Sewer Fund in 2021 include the 75th Street Water Main Replacement at $1.5 million, water tower repair and painting at $1.3 million. And in sanitary services, we have basin B improvements and manhole sealing at $1.6 million, and capital maintenance of basins C, D, and E. Next slide, Phil. Okay, that concludes the summary of the village's 2021 budget. Were there any questions?
Tracy, I have a couple of questions. Trustee Blair, you said there's going to be a 12% decline in our sales tax in 2021. Now, I, we will begin charging, online customers will begin being charged sales tax beginning in January, but we will not realize anything or in July, correct?
And then. It, it changed to January 1st.
Okay, so then we would maybe realize some of those funds by July?
Probably by April.
So is that factored in?
Yes, we, we looked at that, and there's just so many unknowns. And our, our current sales tax, we're projecting to be about, when we, last time we looked at it, basically a 10% decline that we're projecting, 12% decline, might be a little bit more, might be too optimistic at this point, because our, the last couple of months, sales tax revenues have been even lower than we anticipated. So we thought about decreasing sales tax estimates even lower than, than the 10, 10 to 12% decline. However, we thought that the revenue from the online sales might offset some of those losses, so we decided to keep it just at 10 to 12%, not go any lower, hoping that online sales will offset some of the further declines.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it was taken into consideration.
It was, yes.
And hopefully makes that number not as bad as you thought it was going to be.
Yeah. Well, yes.
I have one more question on the police pension. Now, next year, it's, for 2021, I can't remember what the figure was, but it's significant, what we're, we're paying.
Yeah, $4.6 million or so.
Now, when is it, is it 2022, then, that we start to see a little bit of a deep, you know, where we're gonna start to see a little bit of a decrease? Or when does it, I can't recall when that actually happens.
Nadine might be able to speak better, but I do believe in 2022, it start, it doesn't decrease, but it starts to level off.
Level off, okay. So it won't get worse in 2022, hopefully.
So this is, this is Director Ladoff, if I may just speak here. For, per the current forecast, yes, it should not. It should level off. However, it's really gonna depend. As we know, it has a lot to do with their earnings. I don't know how the pension consolidation is gonna impact that. So there are some variables that I, we can't guarantee we won't see a large increase, but we are done with the step-down of, per the policy. So that's what was driving those $700,000, $800,000 increases. So no, we should not see that happen again. But again, it really depends on how they, their interest earnings and, and what this consolidation does. That might impact that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Anyone else, any comments or questions? Okay. Okay, now moving on to the library's budget for 2021. Their li, their budget was approved by the library board on September 16th, and the total budget for 2021 is just over $4 million. This is a $78,000 decrease from 2020. They reduced some of their repair and maintenance to their building, as well as supply and program costs. COVID-19 has also led to some reprioritizing of their line items. They've increased technology and cleaning supply costs, and also had to reduce programming and staff training. In 2021, the library has budgeted for a roof replacement and exterior painting. Next slide, Phil. So the library's revenues, as we know, they are primarily from property taxes at $3.8 million in 2021, which makes up 96% of their revenue sources, followed by miscellaneous revenues, which includes their grants and fines. Next slide, Phil. And their expenditures, similar to the village, as a service provider, personnel is the largest expense for the library. Personnel costs for 2021, total $2.3 million, followed by their programming materials and commodities for their adult, youth, and children's programming, which is just over $550,000 for 2021. And that concludes the library's presentation. If you have any questions, Director Dubay is here to answer them. Any questions from board members, please? Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much, Tracy. Thank you, Director Dubay. Are there any members of the public wishing to offer testimony for this public hearing or otherwise provide comment on the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget?
Mayor Cunningham, this is Administrator Stonich. There are no members of the public present. I have not received any written comments, and I'll ask Village Planner Green if he's, has any public comments in the queue.
Okay, thank you so much.
We received nothing.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, if there's nothing further, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So move.
A motion by Trustee Blair and a second by Trustee Martinez. Thank you both. Going to ask the board, all those in favor, please sign aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So we will now move to the public comment portion of our meeting, and our meeting is via Zoom, so we'll pause to acknowledge any written public comments that have been received prior to the meeting and enter those into the public record. Going to ask our staff if there are any public comments that have been received that are not related to tonight's agenda.
Mayor Cunningham, there are none.
Okay, thank you so much, Administrator Stonich. We will now provide members of the public an opportunity to provide their comments on any items that are related to items appearing on this evening's board agenda. We'll give it just a moment.
Mayor Cunningham, we do have one. It is from John Seelander, and he is commenting the great presentation that was provided by Tracy Morocco on the public hearing.
Yes, thank you so much. Well noted. And we do thank Tracy again. And also, I would like to thank Phil Green for all of his work, getting all of this coordinated and handling all the visuals for us in the presentations. We really truly appreciate all the good work, so. Are there any members of the public in addition that wish to make a comment?
There are none present this evening in Village Planner Green. Are there any in the waiting room?
Okay, thank you so much. Then we'll go ahead and move on. Going to please ask for a motion to approve items A through C on our omnibus agenda and acceptance of items D through H.
So move Trustee Krusek.
Thank you, Trustee Page, for the motion, and Trustee Krusek for the second. Thank you both. Is there a request for any item to be separately considered this evening? Seeing no one, I'm going to ask our administrator to please review the omnibus for us.
Okay, Mayor Cunningham, members of the board, good evening. Item A is Resolution 2020-89. It's a resolution extending the March 17th, 2020, emergency proclamation through December 18th, 2020. Item B is Resolution 2020-90. It's a resolution authorizing the village administrator and village clerk to execute a service provider agreement and statement of work with Municipal GIS Partners, Inc. Item C is Resolution 2020-91. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor and village clerk to accept a certain grant of permanent and temporary easements. This is in reference to 7931 Everglades. And then we have items D, E, F, and G are previous meeting minutes. And then the last item H are the accounts payable registers for October 23rd and October 30th, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Going to ask our Deputy Clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Krusek.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. This evening, under the Mayor's Report, I do have several items. First, Tier 3 Public Health Mitigations will be going into effect tomorrow, Friday, November 20th. And in light of the resurgence of the COVID-19 positivity rates throughout the state of Illinois have increased significantly. Governor Pritzker recently announced the additional COVID-19 public health mitigations that will take effect in every region across our state in an attempt to slow the spread of this virus, prevent hospitals from being overrun. These latest rounds of mitigations will aim to limit gatherings and encourage residents and our neighbors to please stay home as much as possible and follow proper safety measurements when out in public. Please remember that every action that we take during this time affects our entire community or can significantly impact our community. The Illinois Department of Public Health recommends the following measures to slow the spread of COVID-19. Just going to reiterate, please stay home as much as possible. Properly wear a mask, wash your hands frequently, either with soap and water or hand sanitizer, and watch your distance. Keep at least six feet apart from others to protect them and yourself. And it's always important, if you can, to call and check on your family and your neighbors. In order to comply with Governor Pritzker's Tier 3 Enhanced Mitigations, the Village Hall will be temporarily closed to our public starting on Monday, November 23rd. The health, safety, and welfare of our community and our employees is of the utmost importance, which is why we have decided to take this step in order to do our part to help slow the spread of COVID-19. Despite our closure at Village Hall, the village is still committed to ensuring that we continue to provide our core services during this time. We encourage all of our neighbors and businesses to transact their village business via the phone, email, or our website. And certainly, you can visit the Village Hall and drop off at one of our drop boxes. Those boxes are located right outside of Village Hall. If you have any questions about how best to transact. If you have any questions about how best to transact your particular service that is needed, please don't hesitate to call our main number at 630-852-7000 and know that we will be glad to assist you. We sincerely appreciate everyone's patience and understanding during this time. And during this Thanksgiving and holiday season, we know that things are probably going to be different. Our celebrations may be small or via Zoom even. So please take special care during this time and make the best of the season, the best that we can. Reaching out is important, so if you are able, please try to help others during this time. I know there are amazing organizations dedicated to serving Woodbridge. They work hard to help make a difference and to help those in need. So if you are considering trying to lend a helping hand, please consider donating to our West Suburban Community Pantry, which is located right here in Woodbridge. Blue Jeans for the Homeless, located at Christ the Servant Church in Woodbridge. Crafting for a Cause, which is Woodbridge's Active Senior Group. Jano, the Janes Avenue Neighborhood Resource and Outreach. They are serving our community, and I'll in a moment kind of share something that I just found out. Also, I can never forget Ryan Augustus and His Backpacks for Kindness. There's so many wonderful organizations based right here in Woodbridge that serve our community and far beyond. And if you're able to help, that would be so great. Please do so. And we are very fortunate to have all these incredible organizations and people helping others and just truly making a difference. I just learned that Christ the Servant Church, along with Jano, who they partnered together to deliver holiday non-perishable bags of food for every senior at Woodridge Horizon. This in addition to a generous anonymous donor who is donating gift cards to Jewel for every senior living at Woodridge Horizon. So they're able to get maybe a little turkey or ham to go along with all of the wonderful non-perishables that Christ the Servant is donating. It's just wonderful. I love that two organizations are coming together and working together, and we see this often throughout our community, and it really is just amazing good works here. So we thank Christ the Servant Church and all the families that are helping and our generous donor. We thank you so much. And you know, if you've got a little time and looking for a little something special to do, please consider sending a holiday card or note to Cedarhurst in Woodbridge for the seniors living at Cedarhurst to brighten their day. The same thing at Woodridge Horizon, something you can do right from your homes, and you can get the kids involved. I know that that would really make someone's day, so something very easy and good. And speaking of good, our Giving Tuesday is coming up on Tuesday, December 1st. This is when we celebrate our community recognition, and we will be sharing with everyone all of the wonderful people that are being recognized for doing such great works throughout our community. Businesses, individuals, students. It really is such a wonderful tradition in Woodbridge to do this recognition. And we definitely send our congratulations to everyone and be looking for the list that'll be coming out. And we thank them so much, each and every one, for doing all the great things that they do to help Woodbridge to shine. In addition, December 1st, the week of Giving Tuesday, I would like to invite everyone to participate in honoring and supporting our Woodbridge heroes, our police, fire, emergency, and first responders. If you would, turn on a blue light, put it outside and turn them on, leave them on for the week. That would be great. Tie some blue ribbons out just to show all of our community support and being united together to say thank you. That will be the week of December 1st. I do have something that I would like to read to everyone, and I feel it is an important community message. So dear Woodbridge neighbors, the Woodridge Police Department has investigated a recent incident that it received retain relative, excuse me, to an incident that occurred involving high school students from School District 99. The incident specifically involved the dissemination of hurtful racial social media posts that included violent imagery. As mayor, I am extremely disappointed that this has occurred, and I strongly condemn this offensive conduct and any conduct such as this. Any type of disrespectful behavior has no place in our community and is inconsistent with our community's values. In fact, the Village Board of Trustees and I recently passed Resolution, which is number 2020-81, celebrating our diversity, the diversity in our community, and affirming the village's commitment to diversity, equality, equity, and inclusion for all. Our resolution reinforces the important role that all of us have in ensuring that Woodbridge remains a welcoming, friendly, respectful community for all of our neighbors and our families. I want to thank the students and their families who brought this matter to our attention, and I ask all of us as neighbors to reflect on our core values and what makes our community strong and welcoming. I encourage all parents to take some time to talk with their children about kindness and respect and respecting all others so that everyone may feel welcomed and respected and at home in our community. I thank you very much for your time, and that is my report this evening. Administrator Stonich?
Thank you, Mayor Cunningham. The first item this evening is Resolution 2020-92, and this has been a resolution and a contract a long time in the making, right? As many of the board members can attest to. It's a resolution authorizing the village of Woodbridge to enter into an agreement with Harbor Construction Studio GC for the new facility design-build contract. Chief Cunningham is going to introduce and kick this off, and we are joined by our owners' representatives, Graham Harwood and Andy Joseph, and also this evening, we are joined by representatives also of Harbor Construction, who will be introduced as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. At the direction of the board, Attorney Pat, owner's rep from CCS and staff has spent the better part of the last month negotiating a design build contract with Harbor Construction. This contract will cover the Public Works Salt Dome, the Public Works Cold Storage Building, the new police facility, and renovations to One Plaza. Tonight, we'll have CCS Representative Graham Harwood and Andy Joseph provide a presentation and overview of that contract. But before I turn it over to them, I just want to say through this entire process, I've really come to realize how much work and effort has gone into this. Not only in the last couple of months, that's minuscule to what has happened in the last years, decades, actually, more than a decade. It's just amazing to me how many people have worked on this. I know the village board has worked on this hard. I know staff members present and past staff members have worked on this project. We've had multiple village attorneys working on this project, and we've had numerous community members that have shown support throughout the entire process. And I thank God that those people have supported us through it, through it all. It's a long list of people, but I think it's important to recognize that without those combined efforts, we wouldn't be at this point here tonight. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Graham, who's going to give us the presentation.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Good evening. I feel very humble after that. Chief, very humble indeed, and it's great to be here to come with a presentation that talks about this project. Could we move to the next one, Phil, please? Or Andy, whoever's doing it? Just a recap of where we are at the moment. We've looked and we've completed planning studies previously, and land acquisition has been completed. So, and that's pretty much where we were when we did the budget workshop. Nothing's changed there. But just to give you a recap of where we are. Next one, please. This is an overview of a very preliminary schedule, and it's at a very high level. It will be developed much, much more with the design builder's input, but it gives you an overview and shows you what is coming in the future and where we are now. As we can see, 11/19/2020, we said that we need to finalize design, design-build appointment by 11:30. If we're approved this evening, then we will have achieved that, and we will move on to the next stage, which commences the design. Construction commences in roughly 12 months from 11:30, and the period between now and then is the pre-construction. And as of 11:30, 21, construction will commence with the building. We're going to be looking at it constantly and scrutinizing the schedule as things progress. And we're going to be looking for potential opportunities to reasonably and cost-effectively advance the schedule. So this is by no means cast in stone, but there is a long way to go, and we're just beginning on the path. So this just is what we consider a fairly conservative approach at this point in time. So if we could move to the next one. This is the overall project budget as discussed last month. We're just revisiting it. It's an indicative budget, and it will continue to be refined as the pre-construction begins on the project. But it just gives you an overview just to like remind you of where we are at this point in time, and if we can move to the next one. The selection process that we've gone through to get here, I think it's important just to recollect how we got here and what an amount of work has gone in to get here before we move on. An RFQ was issued. Ten companies were selected for interviews. Five teams were selected for full presentation and interviews from those 10. And from those five, further three teams were selected for the RFP submission and virtual interviews. So the three teams had to submit proposals, which included cost proposals, as well as a fairly detailed submission. And basically, we looked at those and felt the best all-around fit would be Harbor. They have a driven approach, and they've got municipal and police HQ experience. And I'll ask Harbor to talk at the end, just to give a brief introduction. I think it's important that the board see who Harbor is in terms of awarding a $950,000 project. I think it's important to know who Harbor are. The negotiations with Harbor were led by Attorney Pat. We've been through every clause during this negotiation phase and revisited exhibits attached to the clause numerous times. So we've had fairly extensive discussions and a lot of discussions. Some clauses more than others, but it's been very extensive. And this evening, we come with a contract that is signed by Harbor for the board consideration, and that's at the end of all of those negotiations. So if we could move to the next page, next slide. This is the fee proposal that we're looking at, and it's divided into two. A is pre-construction, and B is construction. Tonight, we're just talking about pre-construction, and we're looking at a design and engineering fixed fee for the pre-construction period. This was negotiated during the contract negotiations. It is as per Harbor's submission with their proposal, which was submitted with the other two companies. Then we looked at the administration section of what will be done during the pre-construction, and we limited that to a monthly fee. We had a sum of money. It was for seven months. We feel that period is probably likely to be 12 months. So we negotiated the monthly fee, multiplied it by 12 months, and we estimated it to be about $155,000. Within this, we have a contingency for special consultants and items that have to be pre-approved before they can be expended, pre-approved by the village. We're going to keep a close eye on this. We can't let it escape. It's very important to keep a very close watch on the dollars, and that's one area where they will have to have pre-approval before proceeding. So with that, we're looking at approximately $990,000 this evening for the pre-construction, and those are pretty much dollars that were part of Harbor's proposal and were competitively bid. Harbor was very, very competitive during that process. The second part for the construction, that will be an amendment to the contract coming later, will be negotiated as and when we get to the GMP. So one other point, the design fee that we're looking at, both for the pre-construction and the construction, is approximately 4% of the overall budget that's available for the construction. So we feel 5% was reasonable, 4%, I think we've got a really good deal, and I think Harbor have been very competitive in that angle, too. So if we could move over, we start. Can we move, Phil? Yeah. A brief discussion about the contract. It is based on the AIA A141, which is a standard form of agreement. And as I said before, that comes in two parts. One for pre-construction, which is what we're looking at tonight, and a further part, which is an amendment for the construction, and those details will be negotiated further down the path. So tonight, we're just looking at design and pre-construction services. We've looked at it and assessed it as being approximately 12 months, and in that 12 months, we've got a lot of work to do. And there's a lot of items in there, including obtaining zoning and going through completing the design, assessing the owner's criteria, make sure we've got what is needed and what is required, and also that we can afford what we're looking at. That's an essential part of where we are. The contract sum, as we said, is $990,000, and that was based on Harbor's response to the request for proposals. We explained that we've moved the time period from seven months to 12 months. We feel that's more realistic. And as I said previously, we will be looking critically at this throughout the course of the pre-construction and looking to try and find avenues where we can get that schedule shortened. But it's a little early at this point in time to start looking at that when we're just beginning along the path. So as explained previously, Harbor's proposal in terms of pre-construction was the most competitive by approximately $100,000. So that, all of that leads us to recommend that the $900,000 is a reasonable sum. It excludes zoning fees, permit fees, and as explained, traffic study we're going to have to do. GeoTech will probably come up very, very quickly, so we'll be looking to do that very soon. come up very, very quickly, so we'll be looking to do that very soon. And those, some of those will be reflected in the contingency. The services, well, they're going to commence with revisiting the owner's criteria and follow on with various stages, and each stage has to be signed off before proceeding to the next stage. Those stages are principally in the design. The concept design would be the first stage. Schematic design would be the next stage. We complete some more drawings and get to the design development. At that stage, we'll probably start looking at composing guaranteed maximum price and obtaining that from Harbor. And then go through agreements, discussions, negotiations before we proceed to complete the design with the construction documents. The pre-construction ends when the construction commences. And at the moment, we have twelve months in for that. But that's always subject to review. So if we could move to the next slide. Next steps, well, what happens if we get the contract signed this evening? We will have a full team kickoff meeting and in compliance with COVID requirements and limitations, it will be on a virtual format. And if we receive approval tonight, we're targeting Monday to just have a a discussion, communications, make sure everybody knows we're on board, where we're going, what we have to do, and an introduction to staff so that everybody can see who's working with who. We will also revisit and finalize the owner's criteria, which is the basis of design. Make sure that when we look at thirty-one thousand, it's distributed in, in the manner that we would, the police department would like it to be done. Maybe things have changed a little since it was done quite a while ago. And we'll be looking at it, see what COVID implications we have on the design. There may be implications there that change it. But generally, to make sure that we have everything in the right format for the right amount of square footage and generally make sure that we've got what we need. And then we'll be looking to complete an estimate to make sure that we're on schedule and on budget. The master schedule you saw earlier on, that's very much a brief, high-level schedule. And as we progress, we'll be analyzing the critical path and seeing if there's any items that we can get done ahead so that those items don't fall on the critical path. In other words, we'll take a very proactive approach as a team. And everyone in the team will challenge every other member of the team to make sure that we keep on schedule and keep under budget. One of the next things we'll be doing is site surveys. Because the first item of work coming up would be external work and civil engineering. We need to have an accurate topographical study to make sure that everything we're looking at is feasible and plausible and we're not missing any obvious topographical discrepancy that might be out there that wasn't shown on previous. All of that will factor into reviewing the zoning requirements and the process that we need to get zoning approval. And that, that is a big item out there and we will be looking very, very closely at what we can do to move that along and forward as quickly as we can. And before we go to Nadine, I'd like to ask Chris Kozak and Zach Harbor to say a few words on, on behalf of Harbor. So if we could do that. Chris, Zach.
Thank you, Graham. And thank you, Andy, and everyone at CCS. Also, I'd like to thank the mayor, the village board, and everyone at the admin and everyone involved in this project. Harbor's very excited and can't wait to work with you guys. Also, I'd like to personally thank Chief Cunningham, Jeff Moline, Eric Pratt, most recently for all the help to get where we're at today, past few months. Harbor's been around for sixty-one years now. Community building is what we do and in our passion. I don't believe there's another Illinois contractor that has more experience in this realm than we have. At this point, I'll introduce Chris Kozak, our Vice President of Construction.
All right. And just to echo what Zach said, you know, again, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity. We're very excited about this project. You know, police stations is one of our strongest suits, you know. I've been with the company for sixteen years and, you know, involved in this business for twenty-six years. I've been involved in over a dozen police projects, probably over a hundred and sixty million dollars worth of facilities. And we, we know what it takes in working with the board. You know, our whole goal on this thing is provide you, you know, the most economical solution you can to meet all your needs. And, you know, work with the board and the staff to make sure you guys have all the proper information you need. You guys are fully in the loop throughout this entire process and we'll be providing reports, progress, updates as we go along. And here to answer any questions, it's an exciting project for the community and we're here to help with that whole process and, you know, help educate you guys in the process as we go along. So once again, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for Harbor. And I think it's a great addition to the team. I think we have an excellent team moving forward. So the next item I have is to issue the project finance bonds. Nadine, if you could talk to that, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Graham. So tonight, I just want to give the board a brief update on financing. So you'll recall a couple of months ago, when we were discussing the project last, we talked about the bond market and how it was historically low in regards to interest rates leading up to that election. Post-election, we did have some volatility. However, happy to report that the market remains very favorable. Current bonds are issuing at about two and a quarter percent. So that's pretty amazing. If the market remains this favorable, staff would like to come back to the board sometime in the first quarter of next year to discuss maybe potentially issuing bonds for the project. And so as always, staff continues to monitor the market and with our, our financial advisor Spear. And we'll keep the board updated on anything that we see. So with that, Madam Mayor, that concludes our presentation for tonight.
Well, thank you, Nadine, and thank you, everyone. So we have before us Resolution twenty twenty-nine-two, a resolution authorizing the Village of Woodridge to enter into an agreement with Harbor Construction and Studio GC for our new facilities design build contract. Going to ask, please, for a motion to approve this resolution.
So move Trustee Blair.
Thank you, Trustee Blair. In a second, please.
Second, Trustee Martinez.
Thank you, Trustee Martinez. Any discussion on this item?
I have a question, if I may.
Yes, please, Trustee Martinez.
The architect. Is that part of Harbor? Where's the cause of the architect for this project?
GC Studio is part of the Harbor contract, yes. So
It's all a package. It's all a package to you. Architect and construction.
Yes, they are, they are the design builder. Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else, please? If our deputy clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Abbott.
Nay.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye, sorry.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item this evening is Item B is Ordinance twenty twenty-three-four. It's an ordinance amending the E-three liquor license classification.
If I could, please have a motion to approve Ordinance twenty twenty-three-four amending our E-three liquor license classification.
So move Trustee Page.
Thank you, Trustee Page. In a second, please.
Second, Trustee Crusek.
Thank you, Trustee Crusek. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, if our deputy clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item C is Resolution twenty twenty-nine-three. It's a resolution authorizing the Village of Woodridge to enter into a legal services agreement with the law firm of Robbins, Solomon, and Pat out of Chicago, Illinois. This is for the village attorney, Legal Services.
Thank you. Asking for a motion, please, to approve Resolution twenty twenty-nine-three authorizing the Village of Woodridge to enter into legal service agreements, agreement, excuse me, with Robbins, Solomon, and Pat, please.
So move Trustee Hendricks.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks. In a second, please.
Second, Trustee Abbott.
Thank you, Trustee Abbott. Any discussion on this item? Seeing no one, if we could, please have our deputy clerk call the roll.
Trustee Page. Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D is Resolution twenty twenty-nine-four. It's a resolution authorizing the Village of Woodridge to enter into an agreement with Village Prosecutor Christine Sharikowitz out of Oakbrook, Illinois. This would be to provide prosecutorial services for the village.
So much. Looking for a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-nine-four.
So move Trustee Crusek.
Thank you, Trustee Crusek. In a second, please.
Second, Trustee Page.
Thank you, Trustee Page. Any discussion on this item? If our deputy clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E is an ordinance, excuse me, ordinance twenty twenty-three-five, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for the Village of Woodridge for all corporate purposes in lieu of an annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-one and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Looking for a motion to approve Ordinance twenty twenty-three-five, please.
So move Trustee Martinez.
Thank you, Trustee Martinez. In a second, please.
Second, Trustee Blair.
Thank you, Trustee Blair. Any discussion on this item? Seeing no one, if our deputy clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item F is Ordinance twenty twenty-three-six. It's an ordinance amending the Village Code of the Village of Woodridge Title VII, Chapter Five, Section seven dash five D dash two. This is in reference to water service rates and charges under the Village Code. This ordinance is for consideration of an increase in the capital improvement fee from thirty cents to sixty cents per one thousand gallons for all usage billed on or after January first of twenty twenty-one. Furthermore, this ordinance would also, or does also include language to allow for a one-time pass-through if, or, and should the Page, the Page Water Commission pass through additional charges in twenty twenty-one to the village.
For a motion to approve Ordinance twenty twenty-three-six, please.
So move Trustee Hendricks.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks. In a second, please.
Second, Trustee Abbott.
Thank you, Trustee Abbott. Any discussion on this item? If our deputy clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
No.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item G is Resolution twenty twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty-nine-five. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor and village clerk to execute a certain eleventh extension to the agreement between the Village of Woodridge and Johnson Controls, Inc. for HVAC maintenance services for the year twenty twenty-one.
If I could, please have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-nine-five.
So move Trustee Crusek.
Thank you, Trustee Crusek. In a second, please.
Second, Trustee Page.
Thank you, Trustee Page. Any discussion on this item? Our deputy clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sorry about that, everyone. Item H is Resolution twenty twenty-nine-six. It's a resolution authorizing the acceptance of certain required improvements. And the bill's sale for certain improvements, so this is in relation to the seven-eleven at seventy-five hundred James Avenue.
Looking for a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-nine-six, please.
So move Trustee Blair.
Thank you, Trustee Blair. In a second, please.
Second, Trustee Hendricks.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks. Any discussion on this item? Okay, if our deputy clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item I is Resolution twenty twenty-nine-seven. It's a resolution making a determination relative to the release of executive session minutes pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. This is March twenty twenty through October twenty twenty.
I could please have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-nine-seven.
So move Trustee Crusek.
Thank you, Trustee Crusek. In a second, please.
Second, Trustee Page.
Thank you, Trustee Page. Any discussion on this item? If our deputy clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item J is Resolution twenty twenty-nine-eight. It's a resolution ratifying certain emergency actions taken under the March seventeenth, twenty twenty proclamation of emergency. Furthermore, this item ratifies the actions taken by Mayor Cunningham recently under the proclamation of emergency specifically for the suspension of water disconnections and water late payment penalties until further notice.
Thank you. Looking for an approval for Resolution twenty twenty-nine-eight. So I'm looking for a motion, please, to approve this resolution.
So move Trustee Martinez.
Thank you, Trustee Martinez. In a second, please.
Second, Trustee Page.
Thank you, Trustee Page. Any discussion on this item? Our deputy clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The last item this evening is Item K, Resolution twenty twenty-nine-nine. It's a resolution in support of the Woodridge Police Department's law enforcement professionals.
Looking for a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-nine, please.
So move Trustee Crusek.
Thank you, Trustee Crusek. In a second, please.
Second, Trustee Hendricks.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks. Any discussion on this item?
Yes, Mayor, Trustee Blair. Paragraph six and seven. All the other paragraphs begin with the village. And for whatever reason, six and seven, it says the corporate authority. I would like to see that changed back to the village. It's vague and it sounds like the initiatives that we're talking about in those two paragraphs are not supported by the village. are not supported by the village. I would like to see that verbiage changed.
You know, that's not the intention, but yes, you are correct. So we have recommendation, an amendment request by trustee Blair for both item or paragraph 6 and 7 to change to the village. Can I ask for a second, please, on that?
A second, trustee Martinez.
Thank you, trustee Martinez. And I just want to be sure, I'm going to check with our attorney, attorney Pat, anything else that we need to do?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. Anyone else? Thank you. I'm going to ask our deputy clerk to please call the roll.
Wait, Mayor, if I could just clarify, you're calling the roll on the proposed amendment because there's a motion on the floor to approve the resolution.
Yes.
Trustee Mayor, Blair is making a motion to approve the amendment. You have, if, if that passes, you still have to go to the underlying motion, which is to approve the, the, the resolution as amended.
Okay, so we're doing that first.
First you're doing, first you're doing trustee Blair's requested amendment.
Okay. Sounds great. So we are going to ask our deputy clerk to please call the roll for the amended village line added in, in place of what we had originally submitted. And if our deputy clerk would call the roll with the change.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. And then now attorney Pat, I just want to be sure we're going to vote on Resolution 2020-99, please.
As amended.
As amended, yes. If our deputy clerk would call the roll, please.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Just very proud of the resolution that we just passed as well as our last resolution. This is for all of the excellence and service in our community to our police professionals. Just for their incredible efforts, their professionalism, their outreach, their leadership. They help our community every single day, life-saving actions, and we thank them for their service and protecting our community each and every day for each of our residents and our businesses. We will go over the first meeting in December, and I would like to have us read that resolution before our community. So just in celebration. Thank everyone for an excellent meeting this evening. We went through a lot of information. Want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Please stay safe. Please take good care. Take out whenever you can. Let's help our small and, and larger businesses, our restaurants. And happy, happy Thanksgiving from all of us here at the Village of Woodridge. With no further business to discuss this evening, I'd like to ask for a motion, please, to adjourn our regular board meeting.
So move trustee Crusek.
Thank you, trustee Crusek. And a second, please.
Second trustee Hendricks.
Thank you, trustee Hendricks. The, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you very much, everyone. We are adjourned. It is 8:17 PM.